We call the, call to order the Winterville Planning and Zoning Board for May 15th to order. This time we welcome all board members and those in the audience to this meeting as we take care of the business of the town of Winterville. We have two excused absences, Brandy Daniel and Mike Wedlin, who have expressed conflict of interest and for childcare purposes. Any questions with regard to the excused absences? What is the pleasure of the board with regard to the excused absence for Brandy Daniels and Mike Wedlin?
I make a motion, we accept their excuse, approve it.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second, although in favor, you voted a sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, use nay. Excuse absence granted. Approval of the agenda, you have the agenda in your board packet, I think there's copies for you as well. Final review, what is the pleasure of the board with regard to the agenda for tonight?
Motion to approve.
Okay, men moved in properly second, all those in favor of the agenda, you just voted a sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. All right, new business. Staff?
Good evening, Planning and Zoning Board members. So today we just have two items on the agenda. The first one will be Randy Bowers' final plat. This is located roughly 2,200 feet east of Old Tar Road and Lori Ellis Road intersection, and I'll show you that in a little bit more detail here in a second. On the north side of Lori Ellis Road, it is a 3.003 acre parcel. The existing parcel will have roughly 84.5 acres remaining after this three acres is removed, or if it's removed. The current zoning is agricultural residential. On the screen right now, where the star is located, you can see the area in which the subdivision is proposed. Again, it's a, it's a three acre site being cut out of that large area with the, the blue outline. Anybody have any questions about location? Just zooming in a bit on this piece of property. And this is the subdivision map, final plat that was submitted. This is aerial with the map kind of overlaid to show the location. As, as we ran into last month, extremely unique, we've probably seen three of these in the past, I don't know how many years, but two of them in a row. This is a single, you know, residential property located on what is designated as a minor or major thoroughfare by the Greenville MPO. In this case, it's a minor, not a major. What that means is, within the subdivision ordinance, it gives town council the ability to approve or deny the subdivision based on, you know, its location abutting a proposed thoroughfare. Where a subdivision abuts or contains an existing or proposed thoroughfare, the town council may require marginal access streets. Oh, let me go back actually. Where residential subdivision lots are located on a major or minor thoroughfare, they shall have driveway access from an internal street and shall not have individual driveway connections to the thoroughfare unless necessar, necess, necess, unless necessary, by the topography or the property accessibility, and only when specifically approved by council. I chatted with NC DOT again on this one. Their driveway engineer, Gene Pittman, that I talked to, wanted to let me know that they ensure safe and prudent driveway access and design when they receive an application. So NC DOT, this is the NC DOT street, they would give final access onto this street. So our subdivision, if we subdivide it, DOT could still say, this is not a safe or prudent location for driveway access theoretically. Again, considering this final plat, if approved, it may grant driveway access onto Lori Ellis Road, of course, if DOT approves the driveway. If anybody has any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Can you go back to the aerial and kind of give me some direction as to exactly where are we with regard to?
Yeah, absolutely. So is anybody aware of the Cotton, Cotton Barn? It is essentially kind of across the street from the Cotton Barn. There's also, what school is this?
That Montessori?
The Montessori school, right there as well. So this is a portion of, if you guys know Sue Ellen Brock, she's a local farmer here in town. You know, anytime you have growth, you want to stay ahead of it, with traffic especially. I think that Old Tar Road's widening is going to be really the area that's going to attract a lot of the traffic to then go into the north and south areas of town. To go east and west, I think the next street that we'll see, you know, you have Fire Tower, the next street that I think we'll see have improvements in the future will probably be Worthington. So I think that there are certainly plans from DOT and with the town being a part of that table as well, to try to ensure that the growth doesn't get out of hand in a traffic standpoint. There definitely is on the NC DOT website, and I can certainly get that information for you. You know, without looking at the map, I would be surprised if Lori Ellis was, especially in this location, had any concern with capacity for its designed, you know, street.
Currently, I mean, based on your, the information being a minor thoroughfare, so that means the volume is at a certain rate, so.
Yeah, and you know, that's a lot of times when all of us see the traffic too, or those two rush hours. And you're certainly going to have rush hours here in Winterville with an area that has so much residential. But it's something that I think we need to really be patient about, because the rest of the, the rest of the day and the, you know, times are not as backed up, so, you know, some of these streets that we get to an intersection and we, you know, have to wait a little bit, I think it's just us being from eastern North Carolina, we're going to have to start to get a little bit more acclimated to as well.
How many?
Well, I live, I live close to it, and, you know, I don't think it's very well-traveled at all now, but like I said, I was concerned about the addition of the two subdivisions. But I think it's fine.
With this three point acres, how many homesites are going to be on that lot?
So Winterville has a restriction that per lot, you have, now, with a multifamily rezoning, it, it could get a little bit more confusing, but one residential property per lot, so something like this would, would certainly be just one residential property on this lot, on this three acre lot.
Three acre lot?
Yes, sir.
So we're not talking a whole lot of traffic here coming out of it anyway?
Right, we're not talking about a multifamily project, or, yes, sir.
For clarification, we were, this is being presented as a final plat, so we, it's not the, but you said, you used the word subdivide, so we're not rezoning, or have we rezoned it so that it can be? I was thinking the final plat meaning they are ready to start building and they have...
That's correct. So our subdivision ordinance breaks down subdivisions into two different categories, major and minor subdivisions. There is a list of probably seven items that determines whether it becomes a major or becomes a minor. This one falls into a minor for a couple of different reasons. For one reason is, the lot that is going to be remained, is to, the lot that will remain is in excess of the minimum of, of our subdivision ordinance. It's really confusing if you go into the weeds of it, but essentially, if it is more than 10 acres, the state says it is an exempt subdivision. And of course, if you're not putting any type of streets in there, if you're not putting any subdivisions, or, you know, subdividing that land as well. So that's why the rest of the land is actually exempt, and we're only talking about the three acre site. And that falls into a minor subdivision, you know, don't quote me on this, but it's something to the effect of creating less than three lots at less than a certain amount of acres with no improvements such as streets and things like that. But every single subdivision that comes in, I actually have to kind of run it against the minor and major to see which one it falls into. So the one from last month that we did, that was 15 acres being broken into four different lots, and that fell in because it was over 10 acres being, all of it being utilized, whereas the remainder of this lot is in excess of the 10 acres. Again, it's kind of in the weeds, so I don't know if, if that really answers the question.
Yeah, and I think I understand that, I'm just, you know, the terminology we use, final plat is, once we have gone through the process and they've rezoned, they've submitted, you know, their plans for building, so I'm assuming because this is a minor, they've submitted, this is what we're going to build on this?
Well, not yet. So after, after this would be cut out, final platted, they would then submit like a plot plan to show it. For what they're proposing in agricultural residential, you're absolutely right. Typically, we see a rezoning, then a preliminary plat, then a final plat. In this case, they, an agricultural residential lots minimum is 20,000 square foot lot, so it exceeds the size of this, so they're not going to want to rezone it. They're going to be able to put a single family home on this property without a rezoning. So after this, then it would be a staff level site plans middle, just showing a plot plan of where the house is on that site, and then it would be approved from a staff level review.
Steven, just a quick question, are you saying that this will be a single family residence and not a multiple family residence?
To obtain a multifamily residence, they would have to go through a special use permit. So I guess not 100%, but it, I don't even think it meets the minimum site size for a multifamily. But theoretically, if they did want to do multifamily, they would have to go through a board of adjustment hearing for a special use permit.
Thank you.
Use by right is single family, though. Well, without this, without this, they would have to create some type of secondary road. Again, some, maybe it would be a road adjacent to Lori Ellis that they could feed the homes onto, if they're creating, you know, a full subdivision. Or they would probably continue to farm it until, I guess they would get a large developer, I assume. I don't know whether that's true or not, but, but theoretically, if it's not approved, then they would not be able to build a house with the driveway directly connecting onto a minor thoroughfare. No, I'll say NC DOT does not care what we do in regards to the subdivision. If they think that it's not a, quote, "safe and prudent" location for a driveway permit, they are not going to grant a driveway permit. But it is for the ability to even request a driveway permit.
Regarding the Randy Bauer, Bauer final plat, what's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion to approve the final plat.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor, use your vote and sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay. Final plat approved. Item two, Brookfield, section four, phase one, final plat.
And Brookfield, section four, phase one. This is actually the last section of Brookfield. Applicants are Art Consulting, as well as Cooper Island Development. This is on the northwestern corner of Old Tar Road and Lori Ellis Road. It's a 13.23 acre site that is currently zoned R10 conditional district. The conditions are that the heated area of the houses are a minimum of 1,525 square foot, and that all houses shall have a combination of brick and vinyl fronts or facades. This, this section will include 31 lots. The subdivision has been installed completely, I don't know if, if you get a chance to drive by, it's, it's pretty much completely done. You know, we've changed our ordinance a few months ago that required the subdivider to do all improvements prior to visiting town council, rather than previously we accepted sureties. Town count, or town staff and our engineers have reviewed the subdivision, and all improvements have been made. Prior to it going to council, they will have to put the vegetation on the berm, and you'll find that on Lori Ellis Road and Old Tar Road. You'll see the berm, but the vegetation has not yet been installed, as well as the subdivision warranty. The warranty essentially makes sure that for the next year, everything that's installed is under warranty for defects. This is the location, again, on the northwestern corner of Old Tar Road and Lori Ellis Road. This is how the final plat will lay out on top of the land, again, 31 sites, or lots. A little bit clearer image of Brookfield. It is, it is, absolutely. Staff has recommended the approval of the proposed final plat as it meets the preliminary plat, as well as the construction drawings. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, I was going to say, I went by, in fact, I rode through the subdivision this afternoon, and it's a real asset, I think, to the town of Winterville, and it's beautifully done. And I would, I would recommend it, when the time comes, that we approve it.
Steven, I have a quick question about the stormwater common area. Is that going to be maintained as a moat area, or is that going to be wild, or what's going on there?
So the stormwater is a HOA feature, so the HOA will be maintaining that stormwater pond, yes.
There's a pond there? Going to be a pond?
There is, yes, sir.
Okay, it doesn't show, okay. So it'll have the bushes like they did in the other areas?
Yes, sir.
The hedge?
As well as, you know, other vegetation to help prevent erosion and things like that.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? If not, what is the pleasure of the board regarding the Brookfield, section four, phase one, final plat?
I make a motion that we approve it as presented.
Okay, it's been moved in properly second. All those in favor, use your voting sign of aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Okay, final plat stands approved for Brookfield, section four. Staff report.
I'm seeing you guys fairly enough now, I don't know if there's much more to, to present at this time. We are definitely busy, though. Lots of, I was telling Mr. Killian at the last council meeting, that that day I did 10 single family home zoning compliances. Now, that's, that's a unique day, but we're definitely starting to see a lot of, you know, development, and still a lot of residential development coming to town. So everything's really, really looking good, I'm really happy with the way the town is, is developing and growing, and I think it's, it's something that is really fun to watch. If anybody has any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer, or even if you have some later, just give me a call or an email, I'd be happy to help.
Yeah, I see they're turning soil over there across from the aquatic center. Does that fall into Winterville, or is that on the side?
That one is in Winterville, yes, sir. So that one's going to be the Lowe's Foods grocery store, along with 17 other retail spaces. So that one is in Winterville. If you went just beyond Fire Tower Road, that's where you would fall into Greenville.
Right. Yeah, I often tell people that, that the lines is, but I was, I'm pleased to see that there, it's not just sitting there, growing.
I'm really excited about that project. It's, it's been in the works slash conversation for many years, so.
Other comments from the board?
Our town services moving closer to private area road by now, I agree.
I don't know off the top of my head, I'd have to get you in touch with our public works offices for that. I know that we've got some residential out that way, so over the past probably, I guess, you know, since, since Villa Grande or Villa Grand, whatever, has been developed out there, it's definitely pushed at some. You know, a lot of, a lot of utility extension is done by the, the private sector when they purchase land and then decide to do a project, so, you know, sometimes the, the town does as well when they're really trying to direct growth to a certain location. That's a, that's a great tool to, you know, direct growth, is expand utilities to a certain location. Right now, Winterville's growing so fast, developers are doing a lot of extensions right now. So in this subdivision, everything that will be turned over to the town, whether it's water lines, sewer lines, streets, sidewalks, they take the figure of how much all of that costs, and they put a warranty down of 10% that the town holds for either a year, or until, typically, at eight months, you go out there and you review everything. If there is something wrong with it, then you take the money from the warranty to fix it, rather than the taxpayers covering work that, that was poorly done and didn't last a year. So essentially, it's a way to ensure that the taxpayer's not paying for poor work during that, that first year. The developer is on the hook at that point. It came from the developer, that's correct, yes, ma'am.
Steven, can you, this is not zoning business, but can you give me an update of what's going on with Old Tar Road, and what the timeframe and all this?
Yeah, I think it's 2025 now. The interesting thing, if you go onto Opus, one of my coworkers showed me this last week, you can start to see, kind of in the Canterbury area of Old Tar Road, some of the lots that actually have already gone into agreement with NC DOT and have been purchased. So you'll see some lots that are pushed back, and some lots that are like this, and some, so when you get a chance, go onto Opus and turn the aerials on, it's very interesting to see who has their properties already agreed upon, and, you know, all the settlements with the DOT. So they're still in the property acquisition period at this point. Supposedly, we're going to start to see some real action in 2025. So it'll be here before you know it, but at the same time, I think this is, it, you know, we, and there still has to be relocation of utilities, and that's going to be another big task in the very near future.
But that's not on Winterville's nickel, is it? It's on the state's dime, right?
I would have to double check with the town manager and, and public works director. I really haven't been an electric director, too. I really haven't been involved with it on that aspect of the project, so I, I don't know for sure, and I don't want to misstate. Any? I don't know, but it's really moving along. Every time I drive by it, I'm actually blown away at how quickly they're moving. Yeah, again, with it being a NC DOT road, it's something that we need to, as citizens, staff, ensure that we are letting DOT know that, you know, future transportation concerns and growth in Winterville is, is important as well. So it's something that's certainly on, not only the town, but DOT's radar, is just ensuring that as, as the future grows, that, you know, they stay on top of it as well. It is. From my understanding, the closest facility similar to that is in Winston-Salem. From my understanding, the closest facility similar to that is in Winston-Salem, that people from this area travel to, for their families. So I mean, I think it's going to be, I think it's going to be something really special for Winterville. I'm so happy they chose Winterville because, you know, it's putting our name on the map in a way that, I don't know, I think it's really special, really unique.
Any other business before the board tonight?
I do want to say, remind everybody that our next meeting is on, Don, correct me, is it the 13th? The 13th, just wanted to remind everybody at 7:00 PM. It's Tuesday. It's Tuesday. Thank y'all.
Good evening to everyone. Of course, I'm Mayor Ricky Hines, and I just want to say, thank y'all for your service. Don't get a chance to really, thank y'all, but we appreciate what you do for the town, and on the behalf of the council, you know, I know it takes away from y'all's time, but just like the council, we really appreciate what y'all do, to sit up here and listen to the developers and everyone come in and then make a, make the right decision for the town, because y'all are extending an arm to us, so we really appreciate what y'all do, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. There being a business, entertain a motion to adjourn? Can we get it, get the person? Been moved in properly second, all those in favor, use your vote in a sign of aye? Any opposed? Meeting stands adjourned.
Okay. Good night.
Didn't take any time at all, look at that.